Welcome to a city council meeting of October 11th. Please rise for invocation by Councilman Henderson, followed by the pledges.
Lord, we thank you for the blessing that it is to live here in Williamsport. We thank you for all the blessings that you give us constantly, and we don't take them for granted. We appreciate the safety that we enjoy here, and the change of the seasons. And, Lord, we think of those that are struggling right now because of this hurricane in Florida. We pray for their protection, for their safety as they rebuild now. We pray that you would meet the needs that they have, and we thank you for how you have protected us here in this valley from so many dangers. And we thank you for those that work tirelessly to keep us safe. We thank you for our emergency responders. We pray your blessing on them, and your protection on their lives as they serve. We pray that you would encourage them, meet their needs, and return to them a special blessing as they serve. Lord, we also think of Councilwoman Katz. We pray that you would bless her and return her to health once again, and to meet the needs that she has. And then, as we do the business of the city tonight, Lord, help us to do it with the right heart attitude, with civility, with respect for one another. Help us to make wise decisions. Help us to be open and honest, and have good discussion and dialogue. And we pray that the end result would be that the city would be done well, that the resources of the taxpayers would be used well. And we pray that we would have unity, and that you would bless this meeting. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our pledge to Jesus is to defy the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of city council meeting minutes dated September 27th, 2018. Can I have a motion and second to approve these?
They'll move.
Second.
Here your motion and second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Fra.
Mr. Newhillo.
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Dr. Williamson.
Yes, and those minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Chris Kaiser from Larson Design. I'm not sure if you have anybody to introduce you more than that, so I'm going to welcome you to the podium if you'd like, unless you need to be over here.
If this is okay, can I?
For the recording? Yeah, thank you. To set the stage a little bit, a couple weeks ago at our meeting, we had a discussion about wanting to make sure that the council, and of course, the public as well, had the opportunity to understand the partnership that we've entered in under Larson's direction and support, the partnership that we've entered in with Lowell Sock Township to work towards meeting the requirements of our pollution reduction needs, and the plan that's been developed, as I said, with Larson taking the leadership role on it. So, thank you for coming out this evening, and I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, everyone. Again, as Jonathan said, I'm here to give a bit of a broad overview of the PRP, or the Pollution Reduction Plan, that was submitted jointly between the City of Williamsport and Lowell Sock Township last Tuesday. I know there'll be time in the future where we will want to talk more in depthly with, you know, state agencies and review processes, but tonight, I know there was some discussion before about how the breakdown, and really how the total, how the final numbers came to be what they are in the plan. So that's really what I want to do here tonight. So hopefully, we can go. So, the City of Williamsport and Lowell Sock Township advertise, actually, wait a minute. There we go. The City of Williamsport and Lowell Sock Township have entered into a partnership to prepare and submit a joint pollution reduction plan, PRP. This plan is intended to decrease the amount of nutrients, sediments, from entering surface waters in the Chesapeake Bay watershed by utilizing BMPs, or best management practices. City and Lowell Sock advertise a public comment period on July 2nd, 2018, and the Williamsport Sun Gazette has a requirement under the PRP for a 30-day public review period. The city held a public meeting to present the PRP on July 19th, and township presented their plan at their regularly scheduled meeting on July 24th. Following those 30-day trials, I don't believe any questions came back from the city or the township. So essentially, DEP requires that a pollution reduction plan is developed for both the Chesapeake Bay and their Appendix D, impaired waters, and Appendix E. So for the Chesapeake Bay Appendix D, we need to reduce the sediment, or total suspended solids, by 10%. Also, they identify total phosphorus and total nitrogen by 5 and 3%, but if we reduce that overall 10%, those numbers get absorbed within that 10%. This is a blow-up of essentially the project area. The red symbolizes the boundaries of both Lowell Sock Township and the City of Williamsport, and then the green is our project area, along with, the green is the pervious surface, and the gray is the impervious surface within that. I know it's a little tough to see. I do have some boards if you want to take a larger, better look. So how do we get there? So the impervious pervious land data is utilized through the Chesapeake Bay Conservancy, and their GIS, and their layer system. So we have pervious loading rate, which is pounds acres over a year. So for an impervious area, we have 3,200 acres, multiplied by that loading rate given to us by DEP, we come up with the 6,387,900 pounds per year. For our pervious acreage, we have 6,523, and multiply that by the 278, we get 1.813,394. Then we have some residual to our urbanized drainage areas, which ends up being 22,325, for a grand total of 8,223,619 pounds per year. So that's looking back at that previous, that's utilizing all of that entire, that entire project boundary. Fortunately, we get to parse out some areas, or take pieces of that overall giant pie out of the equation. Those areas are the green, the large green area, oops, sorry. The large green area, which is the combined sewer system area, the purple, which is drainage area that directly goes to the Susquehanna River, and then you can see kind of an orangish layer, which is the PennDOT roadway. So any PennDOT right-of-way can be parsed out, and then we also have some, I know they're kind of faint, but you can see as you look towards Reach Road area, you can see some green, another light green. Those are local NPDS permits that other facilities have their own NPDS permits. So those areas are also taken out of that overall number. So when we utilize some, the land area that those, that the permit, that the NPDS permit is in, that the PennDOT right-of-way is in, we're allowed to take out 776,000, it's a little hard for me to read from here, and then we get to take out the combined sewer area, which is just over 3 million, and then we get to take out some other direct drainage to the river. So in the end, we get a $5.2 million, or 5.2 million reduction from that eight-point Also, we can take credit for previous BMPs that were installed prior to the PRP, and if they were maintained properly, they can also be used to, again, parse out of that final number. Those numbers were ultimately utilized in, you know, some previous DEP calculations that they, that they give to us. And these are a list of some of those previous BMPs. A lot you'll see are some that are in Lowell Sock Township, a couple in the city, but for the most part, you can see netted 116,586 pounds of reduction for existing BMPs. So that's a credit to previous projects. So here's a simpler way of looking at the overall number. That total loading area was 8,223,619. Our parsed area was 5,228,691, and our existing BMPs, 116,586. So that gives us a number of 2,878,329, and we multiply that by the 10% requirement for the overall reduction, and that gives us 287,834 pounds per year. So when we split that out between the available acreage of Lowell Sock Township and their boundary, and the available acreage with the City of Williamsport, we get the 35%, 65% split. So the City of Williamsport would essentially be 99,956, and Lowell Sock Township, 187,878 pounds per year, so 65/35. So the City and Lowell Sock will be responsible to implement improvements that provide a 10% sediment reduction to meet their goal of 287,834 pounds a year. We do have some examples. Originally, they brought a net of over 400,000 pounds per year. There's really, I don't think, you know, we're really just highlighting some potential projects. We're not saying, obviously, you know, those projects are going to come along as developers, or as projects become available, you're going to almost have to, you know, the next step is to pick and choose as projects become available. This is just really giving you an overall grand scheme, you know, here's what, here's what you could get collectively if you went out and did every single BMP that we've illustrated or highlighted. This is a quick map that just really provides an image of that split, of what the area of Lowell Sock is utilizing that 65%, and then the City of Williamsport utilizing the And this is a map just illustrating some of the BMPs that you'll see in the next chart. You'll see most of them, the majority, obviously, are, a lot of them are in Lowell Sock Township. So just a list of various BMPs, from detention basins to roadside infiltration, detention areas, overall detention, rain gardens, that's likely a pretty popular BMP. Again, some more detention. And then we provide, and you can see essentially, the impervious area, oops, the impervious area, the sediment, the amount of loading that would be reduced, and then an overall cost. So we've got a lot of, you know, range of costs, from small costs of 15,000, to the next one is, you know, an infiltration basin of over 200,000. Some of these, again, are going to, you know, this has got an inflated number to it, you know, they may have land acquisition, they may be right-of-way, you know, it's kind of tough to really hone in on what the actual costs of all will be. And then we've also highlighted stream bank restoration projects. Lowell Sock Township has a number of projects along Miller's Run that can be utilized for stream bank restoration, and that would provide a pretty big bang for the buck if they're implemented. And you can see, this final cost here at the bottom is 3,267,240. That's adding up, again, the stream bank restoration projects, and then the previous, these previous BMP projects. So, you know, it's not, that's not the final number that, you know, we're held to, it's just, it's a range to pick from. And then, just a couple quick examples of some possible BMPs that would be utilized. Again, the infiltration basin, just a shallow, shallow area for water to infiltrate back into the ground. Infiltration trenches, pretty similar process. The rain garden, which is one of the more popular BMPs, again, because you get to, you can incorporate landscaping and plants, and make it a bit more of an aesthetic BMP as opposed to, you know, the infiltration basin. And then the stream bank restoration, which gets a lot more, gets a lot more bang for the dollar spent. And then just, we, you know, obviously, we're going to want to look for funding opportunities in the future. We know Penn Vest, Growing Greener, and even, I think, utilizing DCNR and their C2P2 program at some instances could probably be utilized in conjunction with, you know, a park or trail project where we want to implement some BMPs. So that's essentially it. I'll try and answer any questions as best I can.
Thank you for making the presentation. One of the things I failed to do earlier in recognizing the partnerships here, not only is this a partnership between Larson Design, the City of Williamsport, Lowell Sock Township, but also we have representatives to water and sanitary authorities that are part of our partnership in all of this, figuring out the best, most cost-effective way to meet these requirements. And if I understand it correctly, and help me to make sure that I'm explaining this well, excuse me, the idea here, as you said, is, you know, that $3 million figure is not in any way set in stone. In fact, I think even your examples show a combination of private and publicly developed BMPs.
Right.
And some of those, if a private entity creates a BMP, those are maybe a part of a development that they already were planning to do, and instead of putting in curbs around their parking lot, they put in rain gardens around the parking lot, money that would have been spent one way or the other. But if it's spent one way, it can give our community, combined community, credit in a way that helps meet the requirements at a lower cost, at no additional cost potentially for a development, but at a lower cost for the community as a whole. And as we've all been talking through this process, how do we both incentivize that to happen, and also make sure that we have good records, so that we can get credit for that to happen?
Right.
Is by helping private entities be able to reduce their costs in terms of fees that they might pay for stormwater fees. And so, I know the city and the authorities have been working together to finalize our plans, and I think we're close to crossing finishing lines, and just have a few more i's to dot and t's to cross, I think. But we're getting close to there, and then we'll have that incentive law where, or that system in place where either there will be money to be able to implement this from, hopefully, as much as possible outside sources, but if not, a stream of revenue from it within our community to help pay for those. Or in a perfect world, we have development that takes care of it automatically.
Right.
One of the things that, I look at the numbers, the way you presented it, and it actually makes me feel a little more, a little bit less anxious. If you don't mind, could you go back to the one that is, you labeled kind of the easy one to read, that adds and multiplies and subtracts, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, this one. I think for most of us, it's really hard to wrap our mind around that our two communities put 8 million pounds of sediment into the river on an annual basis. And then it's hard to get, wrap our mind around that, well, we really have a 3 million pound problem that we need to reduce, and 2.8, all of that. We can start getting our mind wrapped around maybe 287,000, but the thing that, for the first time ever, jumped out to me, is without really even trying, I think, we already have credits for 116,000 pounds.
Yes, yes.
And we haven't even really started trying, because the mandates haven't been this high.
Right, right. The incentive wasn't really...
Yeah, we'll call it the incentive. And so to then say, well, you know, that 116,000 is split between the city and Lowell Sock, but whatever share of it is the city, is a chunk of the 99,000 pounds that we will be responsible for. And that's makes it, at least in my mind, more manageable. The other thing that, and I want to verify something we learned two weeks ago with you, we begin this process next year, but we don't need to get necessarily to 287,000 pounds of reduction until the fifth year.
Right.
So next year, we could have 10,000 pounds of reduction, and the next year, 35,000 pounds. As long as we get to 287 by the fifth year, we're in good shape. And so, let's say it is that our community has to come up with $3 million to make that happen. Well, that $3 million is spread across two municipalities across five years, that can be paid through public funds or through private funds. I probably am not particularly happy about it, but that makes it much less scary. Do I have my mind wrapped around the numbers?
Well, and again, that 3 million is not...
Yeah, right, right.
That's, you know, that is implementing all those, each one of those BMPs that were outlined, that's implementing all of them, and that takes you almost double of what your 287.
Okay.
So it's really, again, it was the Sears and Roebuck Christmas wish list, kind of, here's a, here's a long list of items that you can, you know, pick from.
Right. And if Santa brings you...
Right.
Three-fourths of them.
Right.
You're good.
Right.
Yeah. Or two-thirds of them, or whatever, right. But even, even if that's our high-dollar mark, spread out over five years, two municipalities, and between public spending and private spending, it becomes an important, but not insurmountable problem. And I think that's a good message out of what we've learned from you tonight. There may be other questions, but that was something that jumped out at me. Ali's?
Well, you hit my major question, which I knew was one of Mrs. Katz's concerns, which was that we have five years to meet that 10% reduction point annually. And I think that's, that's important to note, because it does give us a good long time to work on this yet. Which brings me to my second line of questioning, I guess, which is that we're submitting this currently to the DEP. This plan is being submitted?
It has been. It was submitted last, it was submitted last Tuesday.
October 2nd, it seems to me, yeah. And if there are questions or concerns that DEP has, and it comes back to us for revision?
Yeah.
So this is still basically a starting point for brokering out the final agreement?
Right. And probably likely anywhere from six to nine months, maybe, till we hear back any comments.
Got it. And the five-year, the five-year, the five-year clock starts ticking when? Last October 2nd?
When the, it's in the report, but I believe it's when the individual, the city's NPDS report, NPDS permit expires, which is March, I think, 2018.
March, okay, got it. All right.
So we need to be essentially ready...
Yes.
...to go...
Right.
...by March 19th to begin implementation.
Excellent. And so whether or not we have any comments from DEP to address at some point in eight or nine months after they've reviewed the report, we still need to get moving on the reductions that we've, that we've outlined, or the reduction program that we've kind of outlined in this report. Got it. I think that helps us know where we're going moving forward, and then, of course, if the plan needs to change at all to accommodate any changes, then we, right, then we're fine to move from there. How long did this take Larson to prepare? Chris?
We started in the end of January, early February.
Okay.
And then, you know, working back with, you know, I don't want to put Wendy on the spot, but working back with the authority and Bill Burdette at the township, and then the city, just, you know, trying to hone in on, you know, coming from, you know, 30, you know, using the GIS layers to then even getting, you know, on the ground and following a process to look at the existing BMPs, and using some of the previous PRPs that we did for some smaller communities, and then trying to implement that here, so, yeah.
And explain to me a little bit, it's wonderful that we have a partner in Lowell Sock on this project, because I think we need some regional partnerships, especially in areas like this. Water obviously doesn't stay within the City of Williamsport. So it, Williamsport and Lowell Sock both need these, both need a PRP this year. What state or other, or the surrounding municipalities, and you'll excuse me, I'm not on public works, and I haven't...
I honestly, I don't, I don't...
Currently, there are other partnerships that we pulled, I mean, it's partnered with Hager, so they grew down, initially started with the nine municipalities. They have all since separated. Penn College was one of them. They now have their own PRP program. So there are several other municipalities that have their separate one. It's just this is a good partnership for us.
Well, it would be nice to see us all be able to come back into some sort of fold here at some point on this issue, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think one of the real benefits potentially out of this, and our other work, is building partnership with Lowell Sock on Graphius Run Solutions. I think both of those ultimately will end up intertwining with each other, and the resulting relationships that we build, then, you know, who knows what the future could hold in terms of additional partnership opportunities. Other comments, other questions from members of council?
I just have a question in relation to Penn College, then. They have their own program to address this, but that counts towards the cities, right?
No, they have their own, the college has their own NPDS permit.
Okay.
So that was, we pulled that area, so that, of your, of your parsed area, the college got put in there, since they have their own NPDS permit.
And I still does as well.
Yes.
I still have their own, right under there. So they're part of that.
Okay.
They neither add to our burden, nor to our ability to meet that burden.
Right.
Other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for coming out this evening, and I think there will be other opportunities for us all to work together, and as we begin to get feedback. I assume that the six to nine months, we will hear preliminary answers and areas of concern, if there are any.
Right.
That then, it'll be by the end of the six to nine months that the plan is approved, even if in between now and then, there need to be adjustments made, if any.
Right.
And I'm sure, of course, any adjustments will mean that there's less pounds of sediment that we need to reduce, right?
Right.
All right. Thank you again for coming out.
Thanks, everyone.
And we appreciate your time. Ms. Mia?
Hey, Chris, I don't know if anyone mentioned to you, but I think there might be a couple of questions that we were hoping you could answer about.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We always invite people to stay until, all the way at the end of the meeting. It's such a fun show, right, Mark? All right. Unless there are further comments, I'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is limited to courtesy of the floor. We've had no requests for that this evening, so we can move along to appointments. We have an appointment to the Planning Commission this evening. Mr. Norris will present.
Good evening, President, and members of city council. What I bring before you is a request for your approval or support in appointing Danielle Roslevich to the city's planning commission. She would fill our ninth position... She would fill our ninth position and would provide us with a full complement. I believe Danielle gives us a variety of set skills that we will be needing as pertaining to what we just, the presentation we just held. Danielle does have a background. She has a Masters of Urban and Regional Planning with a focus on environmental and land use planning from the University of Washington. She currently holds the Planning Director for the protection, from protection at Pennsylvania Resource Water Association, and her additional role is also a stormwater planner. She, again, she has great assets to us. I think she would be an additional asset to the Planning Commission and hopefully to me as well as when we move forward with other entities to, in reference to some of our stormwater plans. In addition, she did go through Public Works, and Danielle is enthusiastically looking forward to serve the community.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this appointment? So bear a motion in a second. I believe Mr. Noviello will report for Public Works.
We did, and Danielle gave us the honor of her presence for a short period of time, and we spoke to her about her credentials and saw a bit of her background. And obviously, as we read her resume that she sent us, that issues speak for themselves, quite frankly. And the fact that, the moment I saw BMPs in MS4 here, I thought, this is where we go. There are two ways about that, so we just gave her our thanks for offering her services and expect those services to be beneficial as we go down the road.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions, members of council? Just on behalf of council, express our thankfulness for her willing to serve in this capacity of the city and our, I don't know how to say it exactly, that we're impressed that she's willing to offer extensive resume and skills on behalf of the city. I think she'll be a real asset in this role and who knows what other role, ideas we can bend her ear over in that volunteer capacity. So if there are no further comments, Ms. Frank on the appointment, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Schlatter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that appointment is approved. Thank you, Mr. Eric. Next item on the agenda is Resolution to Approve Transportation Alternatives Program Grant Agreement. Ms. Frank, confirm, please.
Resolution to Approve a Transportation Alternative Program Federal Aid Reimbursement Grant Agreement for the Pathway to Health Phase Four Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Any motion in a second? Mr. Hallack, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you, Dr. Williamson, members of council. The resolution before you authorizes the execution of the construction reimbursement agreement between the City of Williamsport and Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the Pathways to Health Phase Four Project. Last year, the city submitted a grant application to Penn dot for Phase Four and was awarded approximately $800,000 for street skate improvements, including street sidewalk replacements, curb ramps, new lighting, trees, and various other improvements along a stretch on Campbell Street between Fourth and Little League and along Little League from Campbell to Hepburn Street. This project is currently under design by Larson Design Group with funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program with expected construction beginning in 2019. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee on Tuesday, and during that review, there were some questions and comments in relation to Exhibit G regarding a traffic, traffic engineering unit and how we plan on accomplishing those tasks. The administration has agreed that in the next 30 days, we'll provide counsel with that plan and who will fill those various functions. With that, with the Finance Committee did recommend bringing it to the full body of council.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mealy?
Yes, Finance did send this to the full body of council with positive recommendation. We, yeah, the majority, excuse me, the majority of our, of our comments were related simply to questions about the workflow, I think, for the item and, and how the administration, there are perhaps not a ton of guarantees. I know that Joe had more or less assured us that the, that Penn Dot takes care of the bidding in this, in this particular process and takes care of some other items. But we were concerned, there's, there's a point at which we have, I believe, a traffic, remind me, some, a traffic engineering team, I think. And we were concerned as to exactly how the administration proposed to meet that need and who the team would be comprised of. That is to say that the, that the city needs a team in place for Penn Dot to contact. And, and it didn't appear that we had that in place currently. So we, the, the discussion at Finance centered around how the administration was going to meet that need, whether or not by the time that we anticipated phasing this in, Mr. Benner would be the one heading it up because his year restriction with Penn Dot would be over, whether or not he wouldn't be capable of doing that, and, and if so, what, what our plan was. And so I believe that the suggestion from Finance was that council pass this document because I believe that Penn Dot has been asking for it for some time now. But pass it with a restriction that the administration will present to us in 30 days, the plan and the personnel who will be specifically in charge of managing this project moving forward. Because obviously, the Finance Department shouldn't be in charge of every element of this, of this project and doesn't have the expertise that will be required for a, a traffic engineering component. With the exception of that, of course, with the, we did have a, I had a quick question for Mr. Kaiser related to, none of us could remember, Chris, and I apologize, what the initial requested amount was from Penn Dot for, or not from Penn Dot, but from the feds for this grant? And if we would be able to accomplish everything we'd intended to accomplish in Phase Four with the, with the funds that we received?
So I don't know, I apologize, I was out in the hall, so I'm not sure how much Joe spoke about the, the project scope because it did, it did shift gears a little bit based on when the original application went to Penn Dot and to where we are today with what Penn Dot has planned for the Third Street overall project. So the original scope within that TAP application was to do lighting improvements starting at Campbell and Third Street, going north to the intersection of Fourth and Campbell, up to Little League, and then going east on Little League and stopping at Walnut. In our talks with the district, working out things for East of Market Street, and then also the, the 84 project that they have in 2020, we didn't want to put lights in and do improvements when they would be coming back through afterwards and doing their roadwork. So we will still be supplying lighting design for that section, but Penn Dot will be incorporating lights as part of their project. So our project, then, we've extended, we've looked to extend the lights down Little League, past Walnut to Hepburn Street. So the whole north side, we're essentially taking those lights proposed for Campbell and Third, Fourth, now we're moving those to, to Hepburn Street or to Little League Boulevard to Hepburn to ultimately tie now Hepburn, now Little League Boulevard would be completely, all the new updated lights. The, the dollar amount of, I think, was 750? I apologize if I... 798.5.
That was what I was thinking. Okay. And, and so we feel that we can accomplish the, we feel, we feel that we can accomplish the project that we're fully funded. The fencing component, which everyone was so excited about?
The fencing component was, was ultimately, we, we, unfortunately, the, the two entities that own property there on the east side of Campbell and at Little League are federally funded through HUD. And since this is federal money, we would have been required to go through the right-of-way process, which in a perfect world takes six to nine months. In the Fed HUD world, we were told we could be looking at a year until we even hear back from them on whether or not they would move forward. It was, it just, timing was not, was not good. So the previous, some previous city administration met with, we met with the hospital to talk about the project, and it was, we need to move forward. We can't, we can't sit two years trying to find out if we'll get right-of-way or not.
So is it something...
Now, that, and that was for the, the south side of Little League.
Right.
And improving the site distance lines and deploying that fence back.
Got it. Is it something that we're going to attempt to move forward with on that longer timeline? Or are we simply abandoning it because the long timeline means we won't be able to use the funding we've received?
I think it needs to be pursued as a, as a separate city initiative to work with them. But as far as utilizing the TAP funds that we've been granted, it's, it just, there's, there's too much of a lag in time to try and make it happen.
And the north side?
The north side, we haven't, I, we haven't proposed any removal or replacement at this time.
Okay, got it. All right, well, that's unfortunate, Chris. No, I mean, that's not your fault, it's nobody's fault, but it's too bad that we can't have it.
It's definitely an objective of the Park Avenue project.
Right.
So it's not dead.
Yeah.
We'll just have to pursue other avenues, yeah.
Chris, I suppose if at any point you have any recommendations for a way in which we could move forward with at least initiating that year-long response time process? If there's a letter or something we need to send to somebody, maybe you could, maybe you could give us, you know, advice on that? Because, I mean, if it's a relatively simple process to get things started, we could get it started and then wait till we hear back, whatever that might be.
We, we started that, I mean, we have those letters, we have those, I have those contacts. I mean, that's something, it's, that's really, that's not a heavy lift at all. I mean, we can start that, it's just, that timing's just going to have to kind of move off to the side a little, slightly parallel with, with our project.
Got it. Okay, well, that, yeah, if you, if you could help us do that, I think, it seems like that's a goal on a number of different fronts. So even if we can't incorporate it into the Pathway to Health.
And their local representation was, you know, the managers of both those facilities were, were all for it, but it was out of their, it's out of their control, so.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, so I think, Ms. Allison, do you recollect any other questions that we had for Mr. Kaiser regarding this item?
No, I can't remember, or can't recall any additional...
I don't remember anything else, yeah. Okay, well, it's exciting that we'll be able to accomplish the remainder that we've, we've gotten all the funding we need. So thank you.
It's, and it's scheduled to be let in February of 2019, so we should be under construction this summer, so.
Okay, sounds great, terrific. So that returns me to my original point that it seems as though I would request an amendment be made to the resolution, or, excuse me, Randy, am I misremembering? I think what we needed to do, Joe, was achieve an understanding because we, because the resolution...
We just wanted to include that in the minutes, that we would do that within the 30-day period and not disturb the resolution itself.
Yeah, the resolution's boilerplate, sorry, we can't mess with that. But, but for the record from the administration, Mr. Winder, Mr. Benner, that means two, two council meetings from now, so that, I think that would be November 8th. Can you please come back to us and with a, with a work plan for addressing this grant moving forward? So that we know, so that we know who to hassle?
I can discuss some.
Okay.
We have Kevin Early, who is a licensed electrician through streets and parks that maintains every traffic signal currently. Our traffic control department does all line painting, plastic work for crosswalks, intersections, arrows, onlys, light bulb changes. We're just like every other municipality that there's a traffic control permit that we're required to follow.
Right.
The only thing we're missing in our department is essentially a traffic engineer.
Right.
To make sure I'm looking at the right pages, or at least the right terminology, I see a, essentially a description for a municipal traffic engineer, a municipal maintenance staff, and that, and that's pretty much what you just listed was the municipal. And then a contractual traffic engineer, is that role played by Larson? Separate from the municipal traffic? I mean, that, basically, we, that plus the contractual maintenance staff. Those are the four areas that Ms. Mealy, I think, is specifically concerned with outlining, that we know who is charged, which each of those areas of responsibility is qualified to do so.
Well, and furthermore, that, that everyone's clear that questions that might come in from Penn Dot regarding the grant are going to the appropriate person. So there's nobody, there's nobody, you know, putting a phone call into so-and-so and so-and-so never responds because it's not their bailiwick and, you know, and the whole ball gets dropped. So that's, that's my concern.
Maintenance, maintenance of records as well.
Yeah, the maintenance of records issue, thank you, Randy.
We keep all maintenance records of a facility in file. Every intersection has its own file, and it goes back to 1953, I think. Every permit that's updated goes into that file, the previous permit states. Our contractual maintenance person is Brian, I can't remember my last name, Lechi Electric. He maintains every other municipality around us, so that's why we utilize him.
And so it may boil down to the municipal traffic engineer, and I'm looking, the page I'm looking at is Exhibit G. What we have, if I understand this correctly, Chris, we have to submit to Penn Dot for that position alone, a brief description of educational background and work experience, including length of employment as municipal traffic engineer, a description of duties assigned, assigned and powers delegated to the municipal traffic engineer under the municipal code, and a municipal organizational chart showing the traffic engineer's position in the hierarchy of municipal government. I mean, that's essentially what we're asking for, for each of those four areas, is what, is what we have to provide to Penn Dot.
And that's something that the administration has already been negotiating, talking to, so that we can establish those around us, or who's in control of it, and what it all is, our teams and other guys.
Thank you very much.
Good. So we'll hear about that then by November 8th in terms, in terms of the final strategy for, okay, sounds great.
Other comments, Mr. Allison?
Well, just, in, we're not nitpicking, just so it's clear that we're not trying to pick everything on this apart. Those of us who have been involved with the Pathway to Health project, and I'm sure everyone else knows that John Gredo was the point man on all of this for all the other phases, so.
Which, which means, we're on Phase Four, but there were sub, there were, if I, to channel my inner Gredo, there was Phase One, Phase One A, Phase One B, Phase Two C, Phase Two, Three, A, B, and C. So we, we've been doing this, the Pathway to Health. I don't know, but maybe my, almost my entire time on council.
So we had a, we had a...
Seven years? More than seven years.
Yeah.
And so I'm hoping that, at the very minimum, somebody's got his binder, his binder full of resolutions.
And, and he is a PE, so we didn't have to, we didn't have any of those concerns. We knew he was the point man, everything could get funneled through him. So we had questions because we never had to ask these before because essentially, it was, the organizational chart was there. It was John Gredo and whoever he delegated the other things to. We're just, we were just concerned. And I think as we, as different projects that we have underway come up and we ask questions, we're concerned about the organizational structure that's going to be put in place, which is the administration's job to formulate that. And we just want to make sure nothing slips through the cracks. We know that's nobody's intention, nobody's going to do purposely do a slack or slack up on any of the jobs. We know that everybody involved is, but we want to make sure that everybody that's assigned different tasks is able to, that somewhere it's centralized and organized in a cohesive way, that the communication, and, and I guess we, we have several people, Mr. Narm, Mr. Winder, and especially on this project, but others as well that we're finding out are... project, but others as well, that we're finding out are, are assigned duties to step up, and we wanna have their backs. It's one thing to say, okay, well, so-and-so's gonna do this, and I told so-and-so to do that, but we wanna make sure that so-and-so has the, the backing and the tools that they need to get the job done, the way that they wanna have do, and the way that we would like to see them do it, so, we'll be asking these questions from time to time, but it's just to make sure that we're on the same page as everybody else is on.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the resolution, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a Green Light Go, Green Light Go program grant reimbursement. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution authorizing the execution of a Green Light Go program grant reimbursement agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
So move.
Second.
Here your motion, second, Mr. Nichols?
Thank you, good evening, President, I'm sorry.
Good evening, I'm sorry.
Oh, good evening. It's warm in here.
It is very warm in here.
Anyway, well, thank you for allowing this resolution to be placed on the agenda, as allows for the execution of a Green Light Go program grant for the old city's Third Street Gateway project. Believe it or not, this is the ninth grant that the city RVT and the Lycoming College partnership has secured from the Commonwealth with the assistance of Dible Development, and I did attach an updated spreadsheet showing you the source and use of the grant funds for the various components of the project. This grant means that the total investment from the state for this project is, is now reaching seven million dollars, and this current grant is for upgraded traffic signals at key intersections in the project area. The project, or these grants, I should say, from the Commonwealth are in addition to thirteen million dollar investment by Lycoming College, and the tremendous support that we received from various local partners, including the First Community Foundation of Pennsylvania, Lycoming Economic Development Foundation, Lycoming County, and that total now is reaching two and a half million dollars, so we've achieved tremendous local support for this major revitalization project. And as you know, that the city provided five hundred thousand dollars in matching dollars to this project from our bond issue, and now we're realizing that that amount is now leveraging a twenty-three million dollar project, which is as tremendous and vital to the revitalization of the downtown East of Market Street and economic development opportunities along the East Third Street Basin Street and Franklin Street corridors. This was reviewed by the Finance Committee, and there was one question that was raised, that the signal at Third and Mulberry once upgraded, what would be the impact to that signal once we achieve the two-way traffic in the block between Market and Mulberry on Third Street? I did discuss this with Chris Kaiser, and there really isn't, if you look at the configuration, what would happen, there is no impact, and so, everything that we do in the project to upgrade that signal would take care of anything that would happen or be needed for the conversion of two-way traffic in that block, so, and Chris can attest to that. Are you still with me on that one? So anyway, the Finance Committee did review this, and I defer back to the Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy?
Finance did review this at our meeting on Tuesday, and forwarded to the full body of council with positive recommendation. It's hard not to forward a grant involving a large quantity of money to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. Anyway, we were, we were excited to see this next step in the funding plan for East Third Street go through, and yeah, the one, the one question that we did ask was about the signal modification, and whether we should take the two-way traffic into account, but it's good to hear, Mr. Kaiser, that we're good to roll one way or the other. So, so excellent, Finance senses the full body of council with positive recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments or questions, members of council? Seeing none, Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Next item-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the res, on the agenda is a resolution approving agreement between the city and county for Ways Gardens. Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution to approve an agreement between the County of Lycoming and City of Williamsport per Act thirteen funds for the Ways Garden Restoration Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Here your motion, second. How are you this evening, Ms. Young?
Fine, thanks. This agreement with Lycoming County is for ten thousand dollars of Act thirteen funds, it's for the Ways Garden Restoration Project. The funding is from the county's two thousand sixteen Act thirteen allocation. The agreement expires on September thirty, two thousand nineteen, and allows for a one-time extension of up to twelve months. Other funding sources for this project include eighty-eight thousand of CDBG funds, ninety thousand of DCNR funds, and fifty thousand of Ways Garden Commission funds. This agreement was reviewed by the city solicitor and by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Ms. Mealy, please.
Finance did review this and forward it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. The, once again, it's, it's a good finance meeting when all we do is review action items, where the money is coming into the city to do, to work on projects, so, we were, we were generally pretty happy. We did establish that, in some discussion, Public Works primarily addressed the, the contract that's next on the agenda, but the one question we did have was what financial position this put us in as regards the, the bid that we got for the Ways Garden project, and we are actually, we actually, I think, have, Bob, you'll forgive me for saying this, but, a little more money than we need for this phase, which would be really exciting. So, so, so this, this puts us in a good position to start working on what I believe would be Phase Two of the Ways Garden project moving forward, if we, if we do in fact manage to, to, to work within the, the bid that we have here. Finance forwarded it to the full body of council with a positive recommendation, and I'll defer to Mr. Allison for anything I've forgotten.
I don't think you forgot, you didn't forget a thing.
Okay.
Any other comments?
We appreciate it, County, doing this.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions? And, and we often like to applaud partnerships, and so in this case, we have the city, the Ways Garden Commission, we have the federal government participating through CDBG, the state participating through DCNR, and of course now the county, so it's a pretty good range of partnerships for a project of a, a real jewel for the city. Any, if there are no other comments, Mrs. Frank on the resolution?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Next item on the agenda is a resolution awarding a contract for the improvement itself. And, Mrs. Frank, please.
Resolution awarding the contract for the twenty eighteen Ways Garden Improvement Project.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second to approve this resolution?
Come on.
Second.
Here your motion, second. Mr. Winder, how are you this evening?
I am not Mr. Winder.
Oh.
But I, I agreed to present this-
I thought you were Mr. Winder. You've been telling me all along that was Mr. Winder.
He is, he is a slippery one here.
I said, I told Adam, I said, I'll be glad to present this for you, because Roman Way is a distant relative in our, my mother's side, who donated the land-
I can see the resemblance.
To, I'm sorry?
I can see the resemblance.
To Roman?
Yes.
He turned out to be a deadbeat, so I don't know, no, I'm just kidding.
Exactly.
Okay. But anyway, no, this is obviously a very exciting project, one that's been in the works for some time. Mr. Esposito's here, who's a big part of this partnership, and time materials and dollars, so, we do appreciate everything he's done. I think the memo from Adam memorialized everything that's about this project. We did receive two bids, Lycoming Spile being the lowest, at two hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars, and the project consists of several items, removal of trees, construction of a pedestrian walkway, event lawn installation, conduit for electrical service, stormwater management, and multi-use four hundred fifty square foot pavilion, and I think there's a drawing attached. He also lists how this is being funded, and we do appreciate all the partners that are making this happen. And this is a very special project, specialized project, and when you get into specialty projects, you know, it has to be really, everybody has to be on the same page, knowing what they need to do to construct, you know, a somewhat elaborate pavilion and a showpiece that will be in Ways Garden. So we've had a lot of discussion with all the partners, and, you know, our recommendation is that we would like council to approve this, but we'd like to stipulate, if it makes sense, that because there'll be a subcontractor involved with this that will construct the pavilion, we would like to have assurance that they have the ability to do that, they understand what is needed to construct, you know, what the city and Mr. Esposito and the Ways Garden Commission are looking to do, and so just sort of as a safety net, so to speak, we would like, if possible, add maybe a, a provision that there'd be a third, we would request a thirty-day time period where that this would be a, an award condition on the prime contractor supplying, who his subcontractor is, and, and allowing us to review that, to assure council or whomever that, that that's acceptable.
Okay. We'll get back to that, but let me first have Mr. Noviello report back from the Public Works Committee.
Yes, thank you. Bob did show up with us on Tuesday and gave us a brief rundown. If I might prevail upon you to take the microphone and, and sort of give us a, a secondary thumbnail sketch of what you had in mind, I'm sure everybody here would appreciate that. Well, no, just, those things that we discussed on Tuesday, I think, we talked about the, the-
The pavilion itself.
The pavilion itself particularly, in some particular, one thing I will mention quickly, we did address the issue of stormwater and, and erosion issues, both of which came out satisfactorily and are gonna be in project, part of the project plans as well, so, that's been fit into the project as, as from the very beginning, so, one less concern we have with respect to that, but I think Bob can explain this a bit better, what he's been up to down there, since he's, he's in charge of what's been taking place there.
Do I really have to explain? I don't, I don't wanna tell anybody. Thank you. As you know, and as, as Mr. Nichols said, the primary focus of this phase of the restoration of Ways Garden is the pavilion. It will be the first time, we hope, in a hundred years that a contributing structure has been put into the historic district. There have been a lot of things that have been built in the historic district, but most of them are not contributing, and we want this to be contributing. We want, when it's finished, that it looks like it's been there for the last hundred and twenty-five years, except in better condition. So, and I believe that is exactly what everyone else that's involved with this project also wants. The, the driving factor behind the size of the pavilion, sides, the fact that it's Eastlakean style, was that the Repass Band fit on it for performances, because one thing that Ways Garden does do every year is have the Bald Eagle Art Show, where Repass Band performs, and we hope they're gonna be doing more performances than just that. Around that, we're hoping ultimately there's going to be handicapped accessible parking, so that we deal with handicap needs in Ways Garden for the first time. The event lawn, which will be in front of the pavilion, for, we hope, numerous things to take place. This particular proposal has a quarter of the pathway around it, but it's the Ways Garden Commission's intent to do the other three quarters. We intend to also see that benches are placed around, and we also intend to see that landscaping is done, which is not technically part of the project, because there wasn't funds for it. So, once this DCNR section is complete, we can then come in and do the rest of the things that are necessary to, to flush it out. And I think that's basically it, I think. Hopefully, the agreement with McCormick Law Firm has been worked on regarding how they will use the parking lot and how Ways Garden will use the parking lot. I'm told that it's being worked on, but I haven't heard any particulars yet, so I'm just throwing that out there. Hopefully, somebody on council has heard something. But it's, it's still our intent also, for that matter, that when all of this is done, we have enough money, thankfully, because we didn't use everything that was needed, we thought might be needed. So, Ways Garden Commission will also replace the electrical system within Ways Garden with all-new lighting and all-new power and such. We know we can basically do all of that as soon as this is completed, and then the future projects will be completion of the fountain and some pathways, and a new entry portal as well, as, and also, something that I came up with, which I'm hoping to see takes place, will be a children's bronze garden, so that children will have a place to, to play. So, and reminiscent, very reminiscent of what has been done in Central Park. So, anyway, there's a lot of exciting things going on, and this is just the first step towards the rest of all of it and my demise. So, anyway, we, we hope you will view this favorably, and, and I think Mr. Nichols has seen to it in his proposal, that any concerns that anyone has regarding the structure of the pavilion can be alleviated, and that it will be exactly what we anticipate.
Thank you very much.
Having heard as much from Bob on Tuesday, we had very little difficulty passing this on to full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Before I open it up to further questions, Ms. Mealy and I were working on some language based on the administration, Mr. Nichols' recommendation, that we want to run by Mr. Lubin as a proposed motion, potential motion to amend, and the language that we are sort of working out on the fly is, be it further resolved, that approval is conditioned on the appro, is subject to the approval by the Public Works Committee with recommendation by the city administration, Ways Garden Commission, of the selection of a suitable construction contractor, with, and executed, approval of an executed contract with a suitable construction subcontractor. Does that make sense? I'll try to say it again for Mrs. Frank this time. So, unless somebody can say it better than me, I will make a motion to add to the resolution, be it further resolved, that approval is conditioned, is subject, approval is subject to, that, subject to the approval by the Public Works Committee upon recommendation by the city administration and Ways Garden Commission of an executed contract with a suitable construction subcontractor.
For the pavilion.
For the pavilion, thank you. Mrs. Frank, does that give you enough?
Yes, I gotta start.
Thank you.
I have the tape.
There we go. And Mr. Nichols, would that, would such a motion make, meet what your needs would be?
For the pavilion within thirty days.
Within, add within thirty days. That's my motion, is there a second? Mr. Noviello offers. Second, comments or questions on the motion to amend? Hearing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend, please?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes. The resolution is amended, we go back to comments or questions on the now amended resolution. Any? Mr. Henderson?
Part of our discussion was about the, the future then, with the added pavilion and event lawn. The expectation is that we'll have more events taking place there, and, and part of that, in that, in that discussion, we were talking about process as far as events being approved, and of course, they're all subject to our, our typical and, and normal process of public events. And of course, they're all subject to our typical and normal process of public events. And then there was kind of an invitation for the city to be a little more involved in that process as well. And so we're thinking about all of that. Also, we were, the question came up, would this, would this change the feel of the park in that it's a place for quiet reflection? We don't feel that it would change the nature of the park in that way. Of course, this pavilion, the way it is, the way it looks in the design just really looks beautiful, looks like it'll fit right in. And we're hopeful that the park will be more utilized by our citizens as they continue to see the additions and things that are taking place there. So it was, it was an exciting discussion. There's always some questions and some hesitation when you, when you change something. But we think this could, this will be a good change, and certainly not jeopardize the desire of many to just sit quietly and reflect in that, in that park. So I just wanted to mention that and bring that up. That was part of our discussion. We look forward to seeing how this will all play out here in the future.
Thank you. Other comments? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank, please.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next item on the agenda is accept for filing. We have the Public Works Committee meeting minutes of July 3, 2018, Public Safety minutes of July 17, 2018, Water and Sanitary Authority meeting minutes of July 25 and August 25, 2018, and the Controller's Report for August 2018. Can I have a motion in a second to accept these for filing?
No move.
Second.
Here, a motion in a second. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank?
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Noviello?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes.
Dr. Williamson?
Yes, and those are approved. Next item is announcements. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on Thursday, October 25, at 7:30 here in council chambers. Other upcoming meetings include on Monday, October 15, at noon is the Planning Commission, Tuesday, October 16, at 10:00 a.m. is the Blighted Property Committee, 3:30 p.m. is ERC.
We're on.
Excellent. And 6:30 p.m. is HARB. On Monday, October 22, there is a report being offered on fire recovery, if I reading that correctly, at 3:30. On Tuesday, October 23, at 1:00 p.m. is the Finance Committee, 2:30 is Public Works, and at 3:30 is Public Safety. On Wednesday, October 24, at 11:30 a.m. is the Redevelopment Authority. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Are there comments or questions, further comments from members of council? Hearing none. Any comments from the administration? Seeing none. And then any comments from the general public? Let me start with you, if you would. If you'd please approach your podium, offer your name and address for the record. And as standard practice, we have three minutes on a matter of city business, please.
Hi, I'm Tiaja Machuga. I live on Park Avenue. Is that all you need for my address?
Usually
1242 Park Avenue in Williamsport?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, President Williamson and other council members. I'm here today to discuss the possibility of the speed bumps that might be going in on Scott Street. Traffic signs are installed on our roadways for many reasons. They inform us of the need to stop, the speed limit, the street names, of which direction to go. And many agencies receive requests for children-at-place signs for schools, parks, churches, et cetera. The Safety Committee was asked to put new speed limit signs and child-at-place signs for Scott Street. As someone who drives for a living, I can tell you that these signs do help make drivers more aware of children being at play out on the roads and, sorry, I'm losing my spot. Children at play, and that we do have plenty of those signs throughout our city, including Ravine Road, which is not a heavily populated child area of our town. Scott Street is a narrow and a one-way street. Adding these street signs would be better for the residents and cheaper for the city than adding speed bumps. I would also like to remind the council that if the city does add speed bumps, you would still have to replace the speed limit streets, signs that are on that street, you would have to lower the speed limit, and you would also have the added cost of adding a street, a speed bump street signs, to inform drivers of street bumps, and the cost of the street bumps, or the speed bumps, sorry. So I'm just asking, when this comes to, you guys, you consider the fact of saving the money from taxpayers for adding speed bumps to a street that really doesn't need it. It just needs more awareness signs for people to drive safely. And also consider that if there is any emergency vehicles that need to go down Scott Street, having speed bumps could also add damage to the police vehicles, the ambulances, the fire trucks, and the residents that live on the street. And that's all I have to say about that one.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Further comments from the general public, please?
Good evening, President Williamson, Bruce Huffman, 1000 Cherry Street. Two things. I just wanted to invite you again to my Williamsport Government and the Struggle for Change talk. That's Monday, October 22, six o'clock at the James V. Brown Library. I invite everybody, citizens from Williamsport. Second thing, in doing all that research, I'd like to bring your attention to a few things. I'm going to start with the codified ordinances of York. Part one of the Administrative Code under Section 12101, Legislative Findings, reads, "The General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania by the Act of July 15, 1957, has granted to the City of York and other third-class cities of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania the right to adopt a home rule charter and a new form of government, and to exercise broadly the power of local self-government. The residents of the City of York, having elected to be governed under the Mayor-Council Charter Plan, beginning January 1, 1962, this Administrative Code is hereby adopted to effectuate such adoption and to provide for the residents of the City of York a progressive, efficient, and economical government. It is the purpose of this code, in keeping with the optional third-class city charter law of 1957, to permit the broadest power of local self-government, consistent with the constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and the charter law itself, and its provisions shall be read and interpreted in the light of such purpose." That was their ordinance, number two, of 1962. Now, the declaration on the wall behind you states, "Now, therefore, this third day of January in the year of our Lord, 1972, it is proclaimed and declared that the City of Williamsport of the County of Lycoming and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is a third-class city under the provisions of Mayor-Council Plan A vested with all the incidents and authority of home rule granted to such cities by Pennsylvania State Legislature by virtue of the Optional Third-Class City Charter Act of July 15, 1957. The same is hereby incorporated by reference fully set forth at length herein. It is signed by the Secretary of the Commonwealth and Milton Shap, Governor of Pennsylvania." A 2014 executive summary document published by the Pennsylvania General Assembly's Local Government Commission to explain the changes related to the modernization of the Third-Class City Code states, "The provisions of the Third-Class City Code would apply to the twenty commission form of government cities and the three cities that have adopted optional plans. In those cities in which cities, in those cases in which cities have adopted a home rule charter or operate under the 1957 Optional Charter Law, the provisions of this code will necessarily apply pursuant to limitations provided in those laws on such matters as subjects of taxation." The executive summary goes on to state, related to Article I, Preliminary Provisions, Section 107B, is also added to clarify that the potential enactment of the new Third-Class City Code will not affect or limit the powers of cities that have adopted a charter under the Optional Third-Class City Charter Law of 1957, or have or will adopt a home rule charter or optional plan under the Home Rule Charter and Optional Plans Law. The updated 2015 Third-Class City Code itself states, under the 107B Section Ability, "This part shall not be construed as a limitation on the ability of a city to do any of the following: (1) to continue operating under the form of government previously selected and exercising powers previously acquired by the city in accordance with the Act of July 15, 1957, known as the Optional Third-Class City Charter Law; (2) to adopt or continue utilizing a form of government and to acquire or continue exercising powers pursuant to an optional plan or home rule charter, which has been granted or may be adopted in accordance with the Home Rule Charter and Optional Plans Law." Lastly, Pennsylvania DCED publication called "Home Rule in Pennsylvania," the 10th Edition, May 2018, states, "A second step by the General Assembly was the adoption of the Optional Third-Class City Charter Law in 1957. This law offered third-class cities a selection of governmental forms provided in the law and granted a measure of home rule power." At the back of this publication is a list of home rule counties and municipalities. There are seven home rule counties listed. There are ninety-six home rule municipalities listed. The list includes Williamsport, and ten other cities still operating under the Optional Third-Class City Charter Law of 1957. These statements seem to imply that Williamsport has a broad grant of power of home rule. Does anyone really know for sure?
Mr. Lubin?
Thank you for, thank you for giving, thank you for giving us, both of you, additional things to think about this evening. If there are no further comments, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Are these comments?